Welcome, everybody, to our September 24th meeting. We will call the meeting to order. The board is not going to enter into accept at this point in time. There is a potential at the end of the meeting that we will enter into executive session. But we are going to begin with our meeting, which means we'll continue with our agenda, which is asking if there are any modifications to the agenda beyond the possibility of exec, which we can do at any point in time by majority vote. Make sure I state that. No? Fantastic, the agenda as presented, which brings us to a special presentation we're so excited for. So it's agenda item 3.1 and it's the, I always, my, not my, Miss I know I was gonna say Laura, but the Lair Award and we have representatives from IPEI, which we're so thankful for. So please come join us here and we'll proceed from there. And if you'd be so kind as to speak into the microphone and announce who you are, we'd be able to capture it in the minutes as well.
All right, hi, everybody. Yeah, I'm this closer. My name is Indy McCasie. I'm the Executive Director of the Ithaca Public Education Initiative or IPEI. And I, for those of you who don't know about IPEI, we were founded in 1996 by local parents, ICSD parents and community members under the belief that public schools are the heart of our communities. And since then, IPEI has awarded over a million dollars in grant funds to ICSD teachers, students and staff members in support of innovative education and leadership. Last year, we awarded 55 grants totaling $62,000, including seven grants to IHS students and LACS students, four at IHS and three at LACS. The deadline for the first round of our grants for this school year is coming up on Monday, October 7th. We've got a little flyer right here in case anybody is interested. You can just signal me after this presentation. And we're also hosting an online grants workshop tomorrow, Wednesday, September 25th, from 3:30 PM to 4:45 to address any questions any teachers or students might have about submitting a grant. We also have office hours regarding these grants on Mondays from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. And you can learn more about grants at ipi.org/ grants or through our Instagram account or Facebook page. We also, IPI also provides key funding for the Kids Discover the Trail Ithaca Program, which ensures that every ICSD pre-K through fifth grade student has the opportunity to experience the local Discovery Trail sites throughout our community. We also serve as a fiscal sponsor for Ithaca STEM Advocates, Fine Arts Booster Group, and various school projects that benefit ICSD students. In addition, every year, IPI stewards over 14 awards and scholarships for Ithaca High School students and staff totaling $55,000. And we're here tonight to award the Raymond and Joan Lair Innovative Science Teaching Award. This award was created by the children of Raymond and Joan Lair to recognize their family's commitment to science education. All eight Lair siblings have attended ICSD schools and two teach as a profession. And I think two more, or more teacher by Cornell as well. Here to introduce the 2024 Raymond and Joan Lair Innovative Science Teaching Award recipient is IHS Associate Principal of Curriculum and Instruction, Hillary Ewing. I'll pass the mic.
Thank you, Indy, and thank you to IPEI. I have been teaching and now I'm an administrator in the district for over a decade. And I can definitely say from personal experience, it has a really big impact on our students and our staff. So thank you for that. And I am very excited to help you with this award tonight. Annually, the Raymond and Joan Lair Innovative Science Teaching Award recognizes an Ithaca City School District teacher who creates innovative science learning opportunities that move students towards the vision of every student being an engaged, educated and empowered thinker, increases inclusion for all students in science and STEM learning, and constructs sustainable programs and routinely shares their successes outside one's classroom or school. This year's recipient brings a background and focus on project-based learning to her biology classroom and incorporates a culturally responsive lens in her pedagogy, structures and curriculum design. One example of this type of project includes a student experience analyzing vaccine rates across different subgroups and the societal structures that can include them in equitable ways. Another example of a project is about macromolecules. Having students pull from their own cultural background to use recipes and foods important to their caregivers and families to analyze macromolecules in food and in their everyday lives. Students discover the building blocks of life through cultural recipes and a connection to their cultural home. In addition to diverse curriculum structures that increase student involvement in STEM topics, Ms. Lauren LJ Lansdowne also fosters student leadership with a focus on classroom and community citizenship and student agency in building the same. In recognition of her work with the students at Ithaca High School, on behalf of the Directors of the Board of IPEI and in honor of the Lair's, I am proud to award Lauren LJ Lansdowne with the Raymond and Joan Lair Innovative Science Teaching Award.
So usually I don't talk in front of adults, so it makes me a little nervous. And I confess, it's kind of weird to talk while I'm sitting down as well. But when Indy sent me the congratulations email indicating that I'd been selected for this award, I was very surprised, to say the least, because I feel like I would be an imposter to take all the credit for this award, because it's not just me. It's all of the people behind me that have made this possible, including my family, who aren't here today. They actually have a soccer game. So I'm glad for them, but, but really, I want to also like give some props to my administrative team who've actually created a really safe environment for me to practice these things and not feel like if I fail, things will go poorly for me. And that's a really important thing that we're creating at IHS together, which I'm so excited about, is creating a really safe environment for all of these things to happen. And we're creating a safe environment, not just for our teachers, but for our students as well. And I think that is really important. But I also like to thank Stan Anderson, Mike Rife, who, Mike is a teacher here. He's also an APPR leader and Stan Anderson used to be our overseas person. But they were my sounding board all year and they were able to give me feedback for my innovative lessons. I have a great department. And the last thing I want to mention is that project-based learning is the future of education. Bringing relevance into curriculum, decolonizing our syllabi, holding space for neurodivergents to flourish, and accessing cultural and linguistic backgrounds for the good of all, the basis of project-based learning. And it should be used in every classroom, every school and every subject, because kids don't learn if they don't see themselves reflected in the curriculum.
Well, on behalf of the Ithaca City Schools Board of Education, Lauren, thank you and thank you for your brief comments, but they were impactful. Thank you for the work that you continue to do. And Ms. Ewing, thank you as well to see you here. And Indy, very nice to meet you officially in this capacity as a relatively new director to IPEI, even though IPI has a long legacy in our school district and we look forward to continued partnership. So can we give our award recipient one more round of applause? That is fantastic. Thank you all very much. What a great way to start a meeting. Greatly appreciated. We will continue on with our agenda, which is the receiving of delegates and public comment, and I believe we do have someone who has signed up to speak this evening.
Yeah, and forgive my pronunciation. It's Peter Wissaker?
Please, you can go right to the microphone and please feel free to correct our pronunciation. We'll capture your name in a minute as well.
My name's Peter Wissaker and I live down here in Fall Creek. I'm here because I want to make sure the county IDA's package of tax abatements for the Southworks Development on South Hill is on your radar. For months, things have been moving slowly but steadily. But now they're scheduled to vote whether to grant the abatements or not in approximately three weeks. As you may know, they're offering a very large set of abatements on a very long schedule. The project is enormous, including 915 new residences, which will feed the school district, as are the tax breaks or what the IDA calls abatements or incentives. The developers are asking for almost two and a half times the normal property tax abatement. The IDA puts the amount at $63 million over 20 years in tax breaks alone. But after looking at the IDA numbers, a couple of folks in the Cornell Program, Planning Program, and I believe that figure is more realistically somewhere between $74 million and $116 million, most likely closer to the larger figure, so you could say $100 million plus. And these will be taken out over 35 years, not completed in 20 years. And it shouldn't be left to folks like me to figure this out. You should, we should have all been told. Since the school district represents 58% of the property tax allotment, according to the IDA's abatement schedule, we're talking about foregoing an estimated $36 million to $67 million in school taxes over a period of 35 years, with most of it in the first 15 years, while the project's being built and most of the housing has come online. The IDA suggests that half will be received during that period. So they'll give them half the tax break during that initial period. But our estimation is that it'll only be somewhere between 11% and 16%, which means this project will have a very, very, very long tail. Incidentally, there's nothing in any of the project's paperwork that estimates the cost to the school district, let alone the town, the county or the city that will emerge from this new neighborhood. It was definitely not included in the so-called cost-benefit analysis they commissioned, which seemed only to have the benefits without discussing the costs. I urge the board and the district to not only pay close attention to what's happening with the abatements, but to get involved. Time is really, really short. It's been said more than once at the IDA meetings that they want to know the district's opinion. They've, and people on the IDA have asked, well, what do the people, and I've long said, school district should have somebody on the committee. I'm not on the committee, needless to say.
We'll, we'll let you finish.
Thank you. It's a small line today. Personally, I hope you tell the IDA, when they ask your opinion, that you need much better information to know what your opinion is, like an estimate of what costs will likely occur as a consequence of the project. God knows, looking at South Hill alone, you can begin to imagine what that might look like. And a realistic abatement schedule, so you can plan ahead for what you may need to provide in the coming years and whether you will have or not have the extra funds to pay for it and for how long.
In closing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trying to also be equitable to folks who come and who are our three minutes. There's no one else who has signed up to speak, so board responses.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. We have multiple councils within the board that are looking into revenue exploration and legislative advocacy. And I can, this is going to be honestly put on the top of our list to get involved. I really appreciate you coming today.
Additional board comments.
Thank you, Peter. Would we be able to get a copy of that to the board clerk so that it can be circulated to the board members? Yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Direct to Tricia and she'll make sure that all board members receive them.
Because I know that previously someone from the district sat on one of the county that was years. Oh, but not IDA, yeah, because they give these incentives for developments, but not incentive for us as like community members, individuals, as well as school district and other places. So we definitely really need to look into this. So thank you very much. And especially noting that the counties cutting their budget and asking 5% cut across the board, but yet the impact it will have on the school district.
Any additional board comments?
I do know that tax abatements are very nuanced. I'd be curious to kind of look into the details of it. A lot of times without tax abatements, a project doesn't move forward. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts to those things. And when it comes to tax abatements, it's not like we're giving them actual dollars. It's just they're paying less than, than they would if it was, you know, fully assessed. And typically you look at like the life of a project and, you know, you, you have a vacant building that's been vacant for, I don't know how many decades, that's also environmentally contaminated. So I know that part of that project is to remediate, you know, to prevent the contamination from spilling into the neighborhoods. It's created housing, it's created jobs. So there, there is a lot of benefits. But again, it, it is very nuanced. I'm curious to understand the two and a half times the normal abatement and why, why that's necessary. But typically it's like, you know, the things, I think it's assessed for like 3 million or something ridiculously low. So the amount of tax. I think so. I don't, I, I know that's what it was a while ago. And, you know, so what will you collect on 3 million worth of revenue versus if you're collecting, you know, a percentage of a $200 million assessed building? It's exponentially greater than if we just let the building sit there and continue to deteriorate. So there, there are benefits of tax abatements, but again, they are very nuanced. And I'd be very curious to kind of look into the details of it, so.
Any additional board comments? My only addition to what has been said so far is that typically the school board does not have a vote or a say on either what we call a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, a PIF, a tax abatement. And so for me, part of it is structural, just to make sure that the board would have some say in whether or not these abatements are granted. And so it's something for us to consider long-term. I think as Todd said, they are very complex, their numbers, we need to sort of explore. But it's always been a difficult thing about sort of public governance that the largest taxing agency would not have a voice or a say in whether or not an abatement is granted. And so look forward to additional conversations as we move forward. And I am certain that I'll be following up with Jill Tripp, who is chairing or co-chairing the Revenue Generation Committee as well to have additional conversations. So thank you and please do share your comments with the.
Can I add something? Although the school district, the school board doesn't have a say, individuals do and community members do. So what do we do in getting this out to our respective communities and go into the county and inquire and, and ask more questions where this is concerned? Because the incentive is one-sided. And that's my opinion.
Thank you, school board members. We will continue on with our agenda, which brings us to our student reps. Good to see our student reps again. Welcome. Last time we began with LACS, I think we're starting with Ithaca High School this time.
Hi, great to see everyone again. Okay, so a few updates about IHS. All the sports teams are far into their season. And a few highlights, the boys varsity soccer team have had a really great start with a current winning streak along with the girls varsity tennis. They have a five-match winning streak, which is great. IHS also earned a renewal of the National Banner Unified Championship School Status for another four-year term, which is a great distinction because it marks the highest level of achievement, achievement for unified champion schools in the nation. And IHS is now one of only 36 national banner schools statewide, which is really cool. Also, several IHS students were selected for the 2024 New York State School Music Association, which is an all-state performing ensemble. Really great.
We got reusable plates and utensils in the cafeteria, which was a surprise, but a good surprise. And we were really worried that people would be misplacing all the plates. But we did hear that students are doing better than we thought. So they're actually like throwing away the, like composting the food and putting the bin, putting the plates in the appropriate places. So it's, it's a very good sign. The second thing I have is our current plan for lockdowns. So as of last year, we asked our school administrations and they said that we didn't have a plan for universal lunch lockdowns. But we do now, and so we will be practicing those throughout the school year, is what we've been told. And we've also been doing lockdowns just in our classes and fire drills as well. One issue that did come up is they announce over the announcement system that it's a drill and the announcements are really quiet. So often classes don't get the message that there's a lockdown and teachers have to rely on their own messaging system that it started. So we're trying to get the announcement system fixed or improved in that way. And finally, we see signs around the school about sexual harassment resources. And they are the same posters that we saw last year, but they have outdated information, including who our Title IX officer is. And I believe there's a Google form link on the poster, which I do not think is active anymore. And we were told that Ms. Hardisty and the deans and student services are currently working on, or would work on incoming reports. And we were wondering why that's the case if we do have a newly appointed Title IX officer. So we would appreciate some more communication on resources provided to all of the students throughout the whole district.
So we met with Ms. Hardisty for the first time on Monday, because we have bi-weekly meetings with her. And it was productive. One of the things we talked about was the art squad construction, which as I'm sure you are aware, you know, has stalled for a long period of time due to some unavoidable reasons, largely due to getting certain kinds of permits for building and just the general fact that construction always takes longer than you think it's going to take. But one of the issues recently has been that a lot of the student body isn't aware of a lot of these problems or a lot of the issues that have arisen. And so they're kind of upset about the fact that the classes aren't in existence as of yet and that they're still having to take their classes in a building, which doesn't necessarily have the required equipment for proper tech instruction. So one thing we're hoping to do is in tandem with school administration, be sending out some information to the student body in the form of an FAQ, just to try to tell people, this is when things will likely be done, which probably won't be for several months. And this is why it's gotten to this point, to try to provide some communication and clarity. Second thing was about graduation. Historically, IHS has had for the last several years, two separate graduations due to a number of reasonable, reasonable causes, because, you know, finances are difficult. We would have to rent out a stadium, which costs about double as much as doing it at home. And additionally, you know, it's difficult to have a ceremony that long with students just going across the stage over and over and over again. That being said, student representatives have received a number of complaints from students who would like to have the opportunity to graduate with everyone in their class. And we brought this up to Ms. Hardisty and she said that they've also received information to the opposite effect. So one thing we're hoping to do in the next week or so is to create and send out a survey to the student body to try to see if we can collect any information on what the student preference is for graduation type. Doesn't necessarily mean that it could be implemented, but it would be interesting to see whether or not we are currently in alignment with the senior preference. So yeah, that's two things that we talked about with her and here's Jingyin.
Okay. So the students and teachers have been noticing increased restrictions on block sites such as like Quizlet, which are using AI, of course, but it's also been disrupting, disrupting the teachers' plans. And while we were talking with Ms. Hardisty, we also found that the, like the buildings that are coming into the courtyard will be coming in like around, well, the temporary classrooms will be coming in around January, but we still need to get that out to the student body. And lastly, with the implementation of reusable plates and utensils, as Claire mentioned, Ms. Hardisty offered us, offered us help to film a video on the lunch process in order to provide students with more confidence on how their dishes are being cleaned, as many do not understand the process and are quite wary of the cleanliness of the plates.
Thank you, Ithaca High School, LACS.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. I'm going to start out with just shouting out our amazing counselors. We have had great, grade-level cohort meetings during our lunch period throughout the start of this year. As a senior, you know, I want to graduate and stuff. So it's pretty important to know what I have to do to do that. And so it's been super helpful to be able to sit down as a class, see where my peers are at, get support from them. And just to highlight a couple of our unique graduation requirements, a lot of work, but totally worth it, really meaningful stuff. 60 hours of community service, a facing bias project where you are analyzing and grappling with a bias that you hold or a bias that has affected you. Sustainers of the environment, which is a somewhat new requirement, where students are asked to grapple with our environment and do our best to do something to support it. Our senior project, which is pretty much anything you want it to be. Students have full creative freedom with that. That's something I'm really excited to do. That can be art projects, pieces of writing, events, anything of that sort. Our GBE essay, which asks students to explore and reflect on their experiences in our super special school, as well as career exploration, which you can fulfill through jobs, internships, et cetera.
Hello, my apologies. Can you tell people what GBE stands for?
Graduation by Exhibition. I'm so, I'm so proud of myself that I know that. I'm, yeah. Yes, no, our acronyms, like I forget what they mean. I'm really proud of myself. Wow, okay. Thank you. We also have committees and projects up and running, which is super exciting. Social justice committees and affinity groups. We are bringing back students of color affinity group, which has not been in operation for two years, mostly due to difficulty finding a staff member who shares our experiences as people of color. We're very happy to bring this back and to have an inclusive space to discuss and connect on our shared experiences and culture. Another committee and project is the Chestnut, which is our newspaper. You guys will definitely get a copy when the first issue is out. And I'm in the project. We spent this afternoon collaging and brainstorming about our first issue, what we think is important to include, all really exciting things. I'm also in Agenda Committee. And if you don't know, that operates our all-school meetings and our democracy. And we have our first ASM tomorrow, which is super exciting. Another committee I want to highlight is PR, which is a new committee. And the purpose is for students to provide communication to other students about things that are going on in our school. So the first production is a flyer about Fall Retreat, which I'm going to pass this off to Brandon and he can tell you more about that.
Yeah, so this Thursday and Friday, LACS and all of our staff and students will embark on our annual pilgrimage, if you will, to Arnot Forest for our annual Fall Retreat. This event is very significant and is very uniquely LACS. It's really meant to build community and relationships between one another, which is a central tenet of our school. I mean, yeah, at Fall Retreat, it's not a rare instance to see teachers and students playing soccer or volleyball, enjoying, you know, a good game of chess or cards or going on a hike through the woods. In fact, last year, John Raymond exhausted himself playing soccer and hurt his back. Students and staff always look forward to Fall Retreat. It's in many ways the highlight of the autumn, so. And on the academic front, we all want to take a moment to highlight some of the really neat and different classes we have at ACS. So some of these courses are called Ancient and Common History, Horror Literature, Constitutional Law, History and Government, and Public Education and Democracy. And I'm going forward, we're going to make it a routine to highlight these unique courses, both past and present, so, yeah.
Thanks. I hope I can hear everything with my mask. Sorry about that. Okay, great. So I wanted to mention an issue that I've been encountering all summer and sort of going into this school year. So I don't have a phone. I rely on this thing for all my homework and for remaining up to date with the world. It's really hard to do this on school Chromebooks. The summer has been, as we all know, really intense.
Uh, the summer has been, as we all know, really intense political wise. Um, I'm interested in politics and always try to tune into major events. And every single one of those major events have proved a pain in the neck to watch. Uh, in June, I tried to see, I tried to tune into no less than nine different mainstream news sites to watch the first presidential debate, starting, of course, with CNN. Um, in every single one of them, the live coverage was blocked. Um, other live coverage on those same sites, including obviously CNN, uh were not blocked. The same thing happened for both conventions and for this fall's debate between Harris and Trump. I tried to find a full video on YouTube afterwards. What came up were a series of shorts and clips and SNL's parody of the 2020 vice presidential debate. Um, I don't believe in clip culture. I don't believe in an incomplete view of current events. Often it's even assigned by classes. Three of my classes in September told us to watch the debate. I think it's really important to get as big a picture of something as you can without relying on various interpretations. And, you know, that's sort of a really big part of growing up into an informed voter. So I think if we can do something about making sure that these news sources and these important news coverage events are not blocked on student Chromebooks, that would be really great. Um, moving on to theater. LACS has finally returned to a student-led theater program. We have a student director and a student theater leadership project where students interested can come together and share ideas. This November, we're putting on Shakespeare's Tempest. Rehearsals have already started and going smoothly. I just got back from one of them. Um, bus arrival again. Um, still hasn't gotten any better. Uh, we've still got the nine twenty to twenty-five arrival each day. Um, it's such a complicated issue. Anything can hold up a bus. We were trying to brainstorm for any possible wild solutions we could try to find. Um, I've been asking around. Our school secretary um suggested a lot of the buses in the morning after they drop off students at IHS and then students to wait for the transfer bus at LACS. Those kids who get there early to IHS early will wait outside for twenty minutes-ish, maybe on the bus for twenty minutes-ish. Uh, and then go to school and get there twenty-five minutes late. Most of them are getting there early enough that if they could get a direct route from right when they get off to LACS, then they'd get there on time. And obviously, that's impossible. But the reason that these buses are held up for so long is because some of the buses get there a little later. Uh, some of them, if you took it directly from there to LACS, they wouldn't be quite on time. If we could manage to find a way to make sure that it's not the whole busload of twenty-five kids getting there late, but one or two kids getting there late, that would be a lot easier. Uh, so we were talking about this and I know there are so many different elements and it's really, really hard to plan for anything. But if possible, could we try to make sure that the kids who are getting to IHS really late could possibly be taken by their buses directly to LACS? And now LACS is like pretty much on the way to the bus garage, so most of those buses are going there afterwards anyway. Um, just a possible wild solution. Something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, student reps. Uh, board responses.
Emily, I'll jump in because your stuff stood out to me the most. I'll let others say whatever else. Um, I did see a couple of people looking very intently when you were talking about buses and the bus arrival time, so um those details don't necessarily fall to our work, but I think we can certainly follow up and make sure that this is addressed because it is a perennial issue at this point. Um, as for talking about um news coverage, um, I am wondering if you, you know, checked with your teachers or people within your own realm. This is certainly something we can ask IT about, uh, because I, it makes me wonder about other students having access to news in a way that's responsible, where it's not necessarily YouTube, which is a rabbit hole, but actually trusted sites. So I think that is something I'm gonna write down and put notes on to follow up with for you.
Thank you, Erin. Other board member responses.
Regards to the um temporary classrooms for the tech program. It's my understanding that that is on schedule, believe it or not, that um we expect to have occupancy of those classrooms in January. The classrooms will be delivered mid-October, but then there will be a whole sequence of equipment and uh piping and electrical work that'll need to be done to make them fit for the purpose that we've gotten them for. So um if you wanna, you know, let people know that, that's great. If you want, I'm sure that um the campus management people or our facilities people would be happy to talk with you to provide information to share with other students, either through the newspaper or some other method. That would be great.
Thank you, Dr. Tripp.
Congratulations to Claire and Seidman for the New York State School Music Association and being part of the limited number of students who were selected from um IHS to present and participate in Rochester in December. So congratulations. And um with regard to the lockdown and universal lunch, and I think we also have to continue to have discussion with um Ms. Hardisty, but also look at our safety plan and what are the procedures around lockdown? Because I believe it states in there that the announcement has to be made over the public announcement system. So just look into that. And that safety plan is on our website and last updated October last year. And congratulations to LACS in advance for an enjoyable Fall Retreat. Every year, I keep hearing good things about the retreat and I know that Arnot Forest is waiting for your arrival.
Any additional board responses?
Just very brief. Um, yeah, uh, I just wanted to say um in response to what Caidman was saying about um just, you know, surveying people at school. I think it's a really good idea um in terms of collecting data and just trying to reach out to to many students and then kind of coming back to the board and letting us know, you know, hey, uh, I was able to survey two hundred students and this is what they said. And I think that 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 helps board reps represent, you know, large, larger groups. So I think it's um, it's it's a nice idea and to the extent that people can talk to lots of students and come back and let us know, you know, what lots of students are thinking is is a very good idea. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Dr. Krampweiss. I'll add just a couple of quick things. It's interesting just about graduation that a number of institutions have now gone down this path, so be it Ithaca College, be it Cornell. So uh COVID has changed things and um we're still reconciling with the pluses and minuses of those. And so that's one of the changes to graduation that, when that took place, but looking forward to the feedback that comes back. Um, about the universal lunch and the lockdown, the school safety plan that Karen mentioned. Uh, the safety plan updates will actually be on the next policy committee. This is something I'm sure that Dr. Bryman will address. So please join us for policy next Tuesday at five PM. I believe it's five PM. We haven't confirmed the time. We, I'm I'm gonna say five PM from now, um but that will be part which we'll address as well. So uh thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, I would like to mention it's an opportunity to remind our community, despite the significant amounts of misinformation and catchy titles, the idea that we are uh working with a local BOCES to update our systems, which includes clocks, but it's far more than clocks, would make sure that we actually have an announcement system where we don't have to whisper or send pigeons to classrooms to identify what's taking place. So for us, this is a significant safety concern and one that we've been trying to address. And the uh BOCES coaster that we did last year uh will help address that in all of our buildings. So we're expecting to be able to update our systems in that regard. So thank you for bringing that in a real way about how it actually works in a school to identify the actual need for that. Um, our Capital Projects website is actually quite robust. Uh, not everyone goes there. They go there only when they need to, but there are regular updates. Uh, Dr. Tripp does an amazing job at the Facilities Committee where each month we go through each project to talk about delays, talk about successes, talk about what we call punch list items when we can finish off a project. Um, and that includes the STEM classrooms as well, was on the last facilities. Again, it'll be discussed next time, but I would recommend all of our community members go to the uh Capital Projects website to find additional information. And to your point, we can do more to be able to push out information as opposed to have folks come find it our way. Technology lockdown, I get it. Quizlet is just a funny example, uh was just released by the school district or tech department. I would humbly ask our students not use CNN as a new source. Um, I say that respectfully. Uh, it's more of an entertainment source. Um, I wonder if C-SPAN is also locked on? I'd be curious to find that out. Yeah, well, right, being hosted by and hosted by a number of other books as well. But that's an excellent question for us to consider. I know it's a significant point of our IT's work to try to figure out what sites are, for lack of a better word, safe and which ones aren't. And not safe for students, but also safe for malware, uh you name it. And so that's an ongoing conversation. Um, but thank you for bringing it to our attention. And I don't even know what board committee that would go to, and maybe it's not even a board committee. We'll task Dr. Brown with trying to to make that happen, so.
I sent the email already.
Say it again.
I sent the email already.
See how quick things happen. That's fantastic. Um, and then lastly, part of the reason why I asked Stella about um GBE or graduation by exhibition, um it coincides with our uh LARA award winner, uh Lauren Lansdowne, who said that project-based learning is the future. Um, one of the things that LACS does beyond GBE are what we call PBATS. Um, board members would be invited to participate in those PBATS. I see we have Deppa Talk, the principal here, uh performance-based assessment tasks. Um, and a blue ribbon council from the New York State Department of Education explored PBATS as part of a pilot program. And we may be moving that way as an entire state towards less regents exams and more performance-based exams. And so that was my ask Stella to make sure that folks know that we are already doing this work in really significant ways. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Um, and then lastly, Grace, thank you for the information about uh our sexual harassment and Title IX. We'll get on that immediately. That's of an essential task. And because of some of the transitions that have happened and within our school, we need to update that information, which we just did at our last board meeting. But we'll make sure those get updated as well and follow up, follow up there. So um oh, and then transportation. Um, it's a continual issue. Uh, I imagine, I think I'll ask uh the our board vice president and Dr. Brown that we do a transportation update at our next board meeting. Um, it's, we're working through a number of things and it would be helpful for the community to know where are some of the issues that we're facing, what are some of the um parts that make it very difficult and ways in which we may improve things. And I know we're gonna start um rolling out some different technology over the next couple of weeks as well that should help with some of this as well. So Dr. Brown and Dr. Krampweiss, if with with board approval, uh it's probably a good idea to have a transportation update at our next board meeting. So Tricia, if you can mark that in the notes. That is more responses than I normally give, but felt like I should address some of those while we're while we're here. Dr. Brown, you have any responses to, I, well, I saw you grab the microphone, so be careful. Uh, that's the professor in me. You look like you're gonna speak and I have to, I have to say something. All right, good folks. Thank you very much. Thank you for our board reps for always sharing. Uh, we greatly appreciate it and we'll we'll look into a number of these items. Uh, we will continue on with our agenda, which brings us to the consent agenda, and we will entertain motions.
I move to approve all consent agenda items listed in the consent agenda, consideration of accounts, personnel reports, students, and minutes of previous meetings as presented.
Moved by Adam, second by Jill. Uh, debate, discussion, conversation, questions. Uh, for our community to note, hearing none, for our community to note, there are a couple of items here that are important. Uh, one, we will be um establishing a NARDI Scholarship Fund. Uh, we thank the NARDI family for this. Um, there will be a resolution to accept bids from farm fresh products. This is a relatively new uh endeavor, not necessarily for the district or for school districts that have the ability to locally source fresh food, which uh I am very excited about. And uh to our uh food service folks, uh so far, the comment from our grandchild that she is wildly excited by the food this year. So whatever we're doing, thank you for for that and thank you for all the work. Um, we are also designating the disposal of, maybe the disposal of surplus property. Want to make sure folks know we've been working hard to make sure that that policy is keeping with what we want to do in ICSD. Um, and we will um be uh ratifying a memorandum of understanding with our employees association, which folks can go look uh online. Any additional comments, questions, debates? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. It brings us to our superintendent report. Uh, Dr. Brown, we understand you were just traveling from earlier today from Albany with uh statewide school superintendents. So thank you for making the trip back in time to join us.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to share, Professor, and it's good to be with all of you. And yes, I was returning from the uh Council for School Superintendents annual event. And this was the largest event ever. There were fourteen hundred educators, superintendents, assistant superintendents, directors, some teachers there we recognize, the New York State Teacher of the Year, the New York State Superintendent of the Year. So it was a pretty cool event. And the City School District was well represented. If you get an opportunity, please, if you see Carrie Burke. Carrie Burke was a presenter this year and she co-presented with uh our own Chris Garbutt from Tetra Tech. And the uh topic for an hour was around innovative learning spaces and how to design, uh to build and to use an innovative space. And the space we're sitting in this evening is one of the spaces that was highlighted. Um, along with the uh two new middle school spaces that um just came online and then our overall school district. Um, and the session was great. I enjoyed it. And folks saw us and talked about us as a leader in how to implement new instructional spaces. Um, also learned how many people are, uh, which word should I use, trolling or lurking or who are following us on our social feed? Um, no less than a dozen folks walked up to me uh yesterday afternoon and some this morning noting our school food. Now, I had to go check myself and uh if you go to our Instagram feed, you will see that uh our new menus just dropped. And they looked amazing. I said it to the folks earlier. Um, and folks asked me, it, the question was a very constructive one and people were curious. Um, I had a superintendent say, ask, who is catering your food? And how do you serve that many meals and how much does it cost you to have a caterer come in? And thank you all for making me look good. Uh, it was good for me to be able to say, no, those are, that's our team. And it allowed me to talk about all the things we've done with grants, the um, the staffing we've added. And then more importantly, the um outstanding folks we have doing their work every day. So thank you um again for making me look good. But uh, no, it was uh, it was awesome. And to our communication folks and putting that stuff out there for people to see from all over the state, a great event. Um, and while also at the event, I had an opportunity to talk to some folks because we have started a search for our uh I'm using the title right now, Chief Business Official. Um, we are looking to uh fill uh two positions in our business office as we've had some transitions. And two very talented people are gonna be transitioning to take on that role in other organizations. And we have a need and a gap in ours. Um, a shout out and a thank you to Ms. Emily Shite. If you see Emily, please say thank you. Because Emily, who is a former business official and a local school district as well, is going to be taking on that role in the interim while we search for one talented person and then another talented person. Um, the job description is up, so if you know someone who would be a good fit for us, uh please share that with them and share it with all of your networks. I've been doing it all weekend. And there was some interest already too. And then uh the item I really wanted to get to, um, those other two were very important as well. In the spirit of, which I hope to use my time uh for the rest of my career during this time, to highlight uh the ways in which our community expects excellence and are gonna get better about recognizing it when we haven't. The last time we were together, we talked about how Ithaca High School has been recognized and most recently awarded um receiving an award as one of the best high schools in the nation, a top two percent. And there are a lot of high schools in this country and one of the best STEM spaces in our, in the country as well. STEM programs in the country as we're building a new center. So we talked about a school last time, but uh tonight I was to highlight an individual. And uh it was just announced a couple of hours ago, uh tomorrow, uh the Honorable State Senator Leah Webb will be giving out a special award and I will read um what the award is for. It's for contributions to growth and prosperity for the Southern Tier. And I've uh gone through and I've looked, it, this is a rare award. And the people who have received it in the past are pretty important people in our state, in our country. Um, so for this person who is a member of our team to get it, it's pretty cool, y'all. Um, I'm gonna try my best to get to Binghamton tomorrow when this award is given. I'm going to try my best to get to Binghamton tomorrow when this award is given. But Senator Webb announced, you can go to our social feeds if you can. Dr. Sean of the Bradwell is going to be receiving that special commendation tomorrow. And as I was reading it, it hit me because I was thinking, man, Sean has probably challenged me more than any professional I've ever worked with. Most times I get, almost every time I get off the phone with him, I am, one, I'm a better person and an educator. But I'm also typically a little angry too, because he's challenged me in a way I hadn't expected. Or he's checked me or interrupted some things that I had done that I could have done better. And I've said this to my parents, I've said it to my family that he has challenged me more than any educator or any professional I've ever worked with. And he's made me a better superintendent. And then today, when I was reading that, it struck me that I'm not alone. And then I did call someone that I don't talk to often this afternoon when I read it. And I was like, yo, did you know Sean won this? He was going to get this? And he said, and they said, I'm going to say the exact same thing I just said about you. So I'm wondering how many people have you made angry today, bro? But in, but in the way, and I think everybody in the room would recognize it too, in the way that's constructive and collaborative and collective. And it's been an honor to be able to work with you and to learn with you for almost fifteen years now. And to see you get this award is pretty cool. So I, for one, and it's, I'm not going to be the one criticizing or jumping on you tonight. I'm going to be celebrating you. Because when we have excellence, it's important for us to recognize it. So congratulations and I'll be there tomorrow.
That is very kind, Dr. Brown. And I will take an opportunity to share something that my family sent, who was quite upset that I have not let anyone in my family know about this award. It is an awkward space to be in, as many of us know, to celebrate whatever recognition you get. And I, I'll say it tomorrow, teaching is not a job. It's a calling and I've been called to teach and so I feel that way. And then my sister sent this to me today. Your silence about your accomplishments is not service. It's enabling your erasure. And so I'm struggling with that idea of accepting the award humbly, but not moving away from it. So thank you for announcing it because I will not announce it. And we'll, we'll keep it moving. I appreciate it and I hope I get to see him in Binghamton tomorrow. So we'll go from there. And thank you to my board colleagues who give me the space to do this work as well. So I'm appreciative. We'll continue on with our school district business and it brings us to our committee updates. Again, a reminder that on the ICSD website, thank you to our great communication team. There is a website that is a summary of our school board meetings, both our voting meetings and our committee work sessions. Folks do an excellent job of summarizing the information, but we also know that our job is to present this information in different spaces and at different times. So folks can stay informed about the work that we're doing. We will try to keep these, for lack of a better word, relatively short. But again, to remind you that there is a space online where, and if I'm not mistaken, we push out as well, once the committees happen. The first committee update is policy committee. And I'm going to yield my time because we have multiple policies on the committee. And I'll take my time then if that works for folks in the audience. That then brings us to the HR committee and Dr. Jill Tripp.
All right. We met on September second. Zach and Gladiera provided an overview of current staffing. Currently, as far as our Ithaca City School District staff, forty-two percent are teachers and professionally affiliated people like occupational therapists and speech pathologists and school psychologists. Eighteen percent are ESPs. Twenty-one percent are Employees Association folks. And that includes custodial, food service, transportation. And the remainder is the executive team, which is approximately five people. About seventeen people managerial confidential, which would be clerks and assistants. And there are a number of vacancies in special ed. And there are four school psychology positions open, two elementary teacher positions open, and thirteen secondary teaching positions open, although of course, all of these are filled with substitutes or through an MOA people who will be filling the positions until someone who has been hired will take over. So we're still actively searching for a number of people in a number of roles. Zach and Gladiere also gave us an overview of the hiring process. And they noted that they're now using something called Schoolfront rather than OLS to take, to track applications through the hiring process. So I guess we're all hopeful that people will no longer get misplaced or lost as they're attempting to find a job in our system. On the next meeting agenda, we have a report on more on staffing vacancies and we hope progress on that. An overview of the actual interview process during hiring. And this will include sharing concerns about equity and the programmed nature of the interview process. I'll take this moment to note that the interviews are advisory only. Decisions are made by principals, department heads, and of course, the executive team. So when people are invited to be on the interviewing committees, it can be frustrating to realize that you're not necessarily voting to approve or disprove a candidate. But it is an advisory position. That's it for human resources. My gosh. Facilities is a long one. Our next meeting is four forty-five, Tuesday, October fifteenth. Everyone's invited. There'll be some interesting topics, including an update on the SED submission and cost estimates on our three B two from the last capital project. Including things like the Fall Creek Playground Planning, entrance to York Hall improvements and proposed parking lot and bus loop behind the board building. So those are all projects that we have a lot of interest in and have been in the works for quite a while. We also will be having staff recommendations for uncommitted funds from the twenty nineteen capital project. An estimate of around one point eight million dollars that we, that we will have to take care of some issues. Things like roofing, paving, wiring, things that are have been either delayed or have not been funded yet. So that will be talked about as well as planning for a possible twenty twenty-five capital project. And that's at the next meeting. In addition, the building condition survey has been begun by Tetra Tech. And that is something that's required every year and is updated every year and that will allow selections of priorities for capital project possibilities as well as the use of uncommitted funds. I don't think I'll go through the current issues and projects in the schools. The, we've already talked about the temporary classrooms with expected occupancy by January. The Boynton Kitchen work has been pushed back till summer of twenty-five, twenty twenty-five due to the delay of a large electrical breaker that is required. And at the Fall Creek Emergency Repair Project demolition has begun. So that's it for facilities for now.
Thank you, Dr. Tripp. Dr. Blaylock, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Sean. So the Finance Committee had its first meeting last week. Want to start by welcoming our newest member, Todd Fox, to the committee. Thank you. The first item, we had three main items to discuss last week, the first of which Dr. Brown has already covered. So we were doing some hiring and he has mounted an aggressive search for new talent. So that's already been discussed. The second thing is that we started our budget process for next year. And I asked our communications team and I want to do a shout out to the local media who are here in the room that the budget process for next year has started. We are taking input. We are welcoming feedback. We are inviting the public to come talk with us. We are willing to go to the public and hear from them. This is an interactive process that will take place throughout the year. And we are welcome to hear from folks right now. We have started. And then the last thing I want to mention is that, you know, we had a we had some challenges last year. And I think we responded as best we can to those challenges. The way the challenges unfolded that we had to respond and quickly. We had a matter of weeks to respond to some of the challenges before us and therefore we adopted some short term responses. Many of them reflect in enrollment. But those responses can't be repeated this year if we're also challenged. And so we, I think, have to look a little deeper and a little harder at efficiencies. And to that end, we asked Dr. Brown to help us with some outside expertise in areas like healthcare and transportation and enrollment management. And he's going to put together an RFP to bring in some outside expertise. And so we're going to look hard at that. We have now the opportunity to consider some long term efficiencies. And we're starting now. So that's Finance Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Blaylock. Dr. Grant, why should I assume that you are the chair?
Yes.
So Curriculum Committee.
Yep. So Curriculum Committee just happened right before this meeting. I thought it was a really great meeting tonight. We talked about a couple of topics in a lot of detail. I'll just give a few details, but you know, we started out by talking about the different curricula that are already in place across elementary school and middle school. So if you're interested and had questions about, you know, like what math programs or curriculum do we have in place K to two or reading three to five, we kind of reviewed the ones that we have in place now. We talked about a new assessment for reading in elementary school called M-Class, which is a four to ten minute reading assessment and it measures the risk of reading failure and sort of helps to identify strengths and weaknesses in reading. And then what happens after students' needs are identified? We sort of talked about like the, the process of what happens when, when we, you know, when those areas are revealed where students need some extra help. We talked about how in elementary school, we have a time block called WIN, which is the what I need time where targeted intervention can occur. And then later we talked about how in the middle school, teachers are starting to develop some different assessments to measure standards throughout the year, which is something that is very exciting to me because I feel like having a multimodal way of of looking at outcome measures is great. Sometimes we have state tests. And now, you know, we're going to have another set of assessment measures that teachers are going to be developing. They're going to be focusing on the standards themselves. And we can look at different data points to see how people are doing. Then later we talked about the grading protocol for high school credit bearing classes that are taught at the middle school. So in the middle school right now, we have a standards based grading approach in the high school. We have kind of a one to one hundred scale grading approach. And we sort of talked about some of the classes that sort of fall in the middle. So there are classes that some students are taking in high school, some are taking in middle school. And the way that those classes might be graded. And we talked about sort of like the pros and cons of using a standards based grading approach for those classes versus a zero to one hundred approach. And you guys could take a look at that conversation for more details. We'll probably talk about it a little bit more because even though we met for an hour and a half, we kind of ran out of time, which is the sign of a good meeting. And those are kind of our, our updates.
Thank you very much. Those are updates from our standing committees. We have two advisory councils as well this year. One is Legislative Advocacy that Aaron has graciously sort of taken the lead on. And so Aaron, can I ask you to give an update on our Legislative Advocacy Committee Council Advisory Council?
Absolutely. And I'm going to update on the TST BOSI's meeting as well. So, so the Legislative Advocacy Advisory Council, which is a bit of a mouthful, so LAAC for short. We had this once before as an actual committee. Our work as a board is to collaborate with community stakeholders to look at legislative issues that we can work on together. And so we've had one initial meeting. We're going to be inviting more people in as this goes. We're looking at this year, really our focus being school funding, right? And how that impacts all districts. It, it's very obviously, as we learned the last school year, that the current way that we fund our public schools is not really a sustainable model for any school in this country, right? They put it all on the local local taxpayers. And that's really not how it should go down. So we're going to be looking at foundation aid and how we can advocate state level to get that changed. And there's already movement on that. So this is a very cool thing to kind of get into and work with on. Tax abatement, which was brought up earlier, will be something we bring up and looking into some of the state and national failings on funding schools and how we can work together to push to fix that. And that also ties in well, TST BOSI's SBA, which is basically a regional school board association meeting that I got to spend an afternoon with our one and only, no longer with us, Lily Talcott, who is now a superintendent there, as, as well as the head of the New York State School Board Association and the Central New York School Board Association. As well as other board members from other regions. But a big conversation that's happening with them, and I'm looking at my notes now, is, is instead of local schools competing against one another, how do we cultivate something different to work together, to share our resources, to benefit students? And that's a big effort that I think we're going to be hearing a lot more about regionalization in the coming year years and working together to share resources. Because there's a lot of them, resources and knowledge. That meeting was really eye opening and it's very exciting because we're going to be able to learn from other districts and collaborate as well with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. I just want to reinforce two ideas. The idea of regionalization is a phrase that folks will hear more and more often. It's happening across the state, particularly at the BOSI's level as they are being more and more involved in that. And folks may know that the Rockefeller Institute has been also taking in feedback about the state aid formula. They've closed their feedback window. But I'm looking forward to whatever the report is going to be, which will be coming out the next couple of months. So we'll learn more about any possible changes. Let me rephrase that. Any possible recommended changes, which don't mean there'll be changes, but there'll be recommendations to change the foundation aid formula. So thank you for that as well. Dr. Tripp, we also have another advocacy or advisory council called Revenue Generation.
Revenue Exploration. That's just what you said. Yes. We did, we've had one meeting so far. Our next meeting will be this Thursday at five o'clock in the board building. During the first meeting, we discussed a lot of revenue options, which we'll be sharing as we go along and particularly in a final report that I hope, hope to have to the board by December. We'll be meeting twice a month. And continuing that work and we'll be still adding a few other members. Currently, it's myself, Catherine Cernara, Cernara and oh, I just forgot her name. Roget. Aurora Roget, yes, from the ITA. And of course, we're going, we have Bob, we have Margaret Fabrizio of of the Cornell. What is it? Fair Share Cornell Group and has volunteered to join us. And so we're adding people to get sort of a wide, wide range of possibilities for looking at more revenue for the school district to be continued.
And a reminder to all school board members that any advisory council is open to all school board members, whether you're on the advisory council or not. So Trish, I believe they're already on our calendar, but just for folks to check the calendar if you have any questions. Thank you very much for our committee updates. Very helpful. This brings us to the next part of our agenda, which will be for policies. I want to thank Emily Workman for, I don't know how long we were on the Zoom call for Emily, but we had a policy committee meeting and then we met outside of policy committee to go over each of the policies. Historically, we've done some of that work at the policy committee. I imagine that will continue. But for this go around, we did a good deal of that work with agreement that we would then present these policies to the board. A reminder to our community that our policy adoption process is a four step process. It goes through policy committee. If the policy committee agrees that it should be sent to the board, then it goes to the board for a first reading. Should the board approve a first reading, it goes back to the policy committee. The policy committee would then send it back to the board for a second reading and adoption. So some of our policies are on for a second reading and adoption this evening and some are on for a first reading, which would then come back to the board. First agenda item eleven point two, policy two, three, two, four is agenda preparation and dissemination for a first reading. For my board colleagues, there are in essence four sentences that we are four sentences that we are recommending be changed on this policy. The first is that it stated that any policy, any agenda item should be sent to the superintendent. And in recognition that the superintendent does not create the agenda for the school board, we thought that any agenda recommendations from teachers, community members, students, whomever be sent to the board clerk, to the board officers, or to the entire school board. That is one change. Second, we wanted to let folks have an idea of when agendas are finalized, which is usually the week beforehand. Third, it was time bound. This policy originally said that agenda items, as long as they were sent three days prior to an agenda, would be included on the agenda with some discretion. We felt that we still would have the ability to do so should the board choose to do so. But to put that in policy was a little restrictive. And so we wanted to give a little bit more flexibility. And then lastly, that's all policies would be held in the board clerk's office, not the superintendent's office, where we hold all other important documents. And so those are the primary changes. I'm going to ask Emily, am I missing something in particular? Emily? Fantastic. So those are the those are the changes to this policy. You can see it documented here. We'll entertain motions and then any discussion, debate, or conversation.
I move to approve Policy 2324, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination for First Reading.
Second.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Aaron. Sorry, Joe, I heard a quick. Questions, debate, discussion, comments?
Yes, I have a question. So we have here, the agenda will be presented to board members three days in advance, if possible. We use a lot of the if possible and don't really present it three days in advance. So are we going to stick with that?
Currently, our board agendas are usually released on Saturday, which gives us Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday. So it may not be enough time. We can have a conversation, but that was the idea that we would at least have agendas sent out by Saturday. And I'll give Tricia a great deal of credit, who is every Saturday morning sending us drafts and then usually waiting for Adam and I to approve it. So if there is a delay, it's usually on our end, not our board clerks.
Well, no, and not for the agenda, but the supporting materials. Sometimes there's the delay in the supporting materials being up because I prefer to look at it before two days at least prior to the board meeting, not looking at an update on the Tuesday of.
Understood.
So we just need
So an example would be any other attachments, if it's an MOA, if it's a personnel document.
And sometimes it's not even the board clerk. It's everyone else that are sending in attachments to the board clerk, not getting it in on a timely fashion.
Understood. That's something that we can reinforce.
I was just going to say usually by Friday, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
I usually let the business office know and HR is HR is really good with the personnel report to have the agenda items by three o'clock on Friday.
And my next comment is it says, um, agenda will also be released to the news media, including local newspapers. Are these multiple vehicles or the one newspaper that within our reorg meeting that were required to give announcement? Because it says newspapers.
You're talking about the plural.
Yeah.
Well, we typically send it to the distribution list. We have a press release list, correct? I'm looking for somebody not. Yeah. So I think that captures all of that, which includes our school designated newspaper. Yes.
Okay. So we send it to multiple?
Yeah, it's part of the list. There goes up to 1,300 people.
So then, but the question has become if we should have a consideration about whether or not we're using newspaper or news outlets.
Right.
Right? So it's not a
Not really a physical paper, but there's some outlets online.
Understood. I'm making notes here as well. Something to add, Dr. Brown?
Maybe we say it's just released to a distribution list or released publicly or released widely. Because a lot has changed since that original language. Yeah.
So then what I would ask our board members is allow the policy committee to go back and talk to legal counsel as well to make sure that we're capturing language. Because I do believe we have to say at least a newspaper, which is our record of source or our newspaper of record, excuse me. But we'll we'll follow up with that with that understanding before we present it back to the to the board. Additional questions, comments, debates? Then we'll call the question, all in favor of approval of first reading? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. That brings us to our next policy, which is Policy 7618, Prohibition of Corporal Punishment and the limited use of timeout and physical restraint for a first reading. I don't know if we have, we will invite Jen Gondak to join us, just in case there are questions. This policy is a result of change in, I said, state regulations. We will have a conversation at some other point in time about the way in which we need to go through our policy book, because there are still policies that are extremely outdated that would need to be removed or updated. But this is a policy. This comes by way of a mandate from the state. And so Jen, welcome. Please introduce yourself. And will you walk us through what this policy is trying to capture?
Sure. Hello, everyone. My name is Jennifer Gondak. I'm the Director of Special Education here in Ithaca. So our, the policy is really looking at a few kind of major changes which were put into legislation. So kind of the big, the big bullet points are updates to our board policy proposed in there. Pretty much it's aligned with our current practices already. But there are some additional requirements. So one requirement is around training for reporting for all staff members to know that if timeout or restraint is used, there's a way to do that. We are moving towards a digital logging system through our school tool forms. And there will be a state reporting requirement. So all that information will get gathered at the school level, go to the district level, and then get reported yearly, which is a new state reporting requirement. The other change is around training for staff that might be asked to perform a restraint on a student that they have you know, full training. We already train our our staff in TCIS. And so using those strategies first for de-escalation and then safely being able to do a restraint if one is needed. And some of the other changes are just really on the form that we already have. We had a paper version. We're now moving to that school tool version. Different things, having the date, the date that information was sent home to the caregivers, just a few minor updates to those fields of reporting.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Oftentimes, there's a situation where our policy is actually being updated to match our practice. And this is probably one of those situations, right? We're already doing many of these things in practice, but now the state has mandated a change in the language of the policy as well. So let's entertain motions, and then we can ask any additional questions that we have.
I move to approve Policy 7618, Prohibition of Corporal Punishment and the Limited Use of Timeout and Physical Restraint for First Reading.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, seconded by Jill. Debate, discussion, questions? Yes.
My concern about this is that there, there's a conflation between timeout as a behavior management technique and what is essentially classroom removal or seclusion as a strategy for de-escalating behavior. And I think you probably followed a model. But I don't know if we're required by the state to call the second thing timeout. One of the things is used in extreme behavioral circumstances where someone is a danger to themselves or others, or destroying property, or can't be safely in a classroom, and they're removed from the classroom or from that setting for a brief period of time under prescribed and I think very appropriate methods. The other is a very useful technique that's helpful for pretty mild behavior issues and should be part of every teacher's arsenal of techniques. And that is the definition of that timeout is when a child is removed from an opportunity for positive reinforcement in a classroom. So it doesn't necessarily imply a person being secluded or restrained or removed from a classroom. It's simply for however you manage it, and typically with small children. Toddlers, for example, you might hold them on your lap while other people are hearing a special story or something to or you might, you know, take them for a walk and they get back to the classroom and find that other people had something special going on and they are meant to think, oh, I'd best stay in the classroom and I'll get to have all sorts of fun things happening. Does that make sense? I'm trying to condense a ridiculous number of years of training down to a soundbite. So I, you know, so something in me cringes at the use of calling this timeout, calling the seclusion sort of thing timeout. I know it sounds better than seclusion or removal, but do we need to do it that way? Or can we somehow make clear the distinction?
I think that the distinction, the revised rule, I'll read the language from page five, kind of initiate the distinction between that. So this is the this is the Q and A that was released in April 2024. It was it says that the revised rule does not include student initiated or a student requested break to utilize coping skills, sensory input or sensory sorry, self-regulation strategies, or the use of a calming space or room that contains coping tools or activities to assist the student to calm or self-regulate. When they, you're reading that correctly, when it's talking about the timeout room, they're talking about a specific room that might be used as part of a behavior plan. We don't actually have any of those rooms in any of our buildings.
Good.
Some other private placements, BOSI's may have a timeout space. That's actually what they're talking about, seclusion designated space.
So in this case, the the use of timeout would not include a calm down room
No.
in our schools.
No.
So we wouldn't be using that more severe version of timeout in our schools. I wonder if we should just say that.
Could amend it?
Yeah.
Or say it as defined in this section.
Yeah, because I mean, we certainly do use the milder form of you know, keeping a child from participating in a positive situation for a limited time under circumstances where it's hoped that that will teach them that they want to be part of the group and want to be part of the normal classroom experience. But if we're not removing people to calm down rooms, maybe we shouldn't be talking about what the timeout, how it would be used. No, I don't know. I'm just, as I said, maybe this is not something that's going to bother anyone else, but it does bother me. And if, if, for example, somebody's IEP and Behavior Intervention Plan included the use of timeout as it's stated here, you'd need to have a room. So we, so we're saying we couldn't have that as part of a Behavior Intervention Plan in the district as well. I mean, I think we need to think through this a little more.
Yeah, I think that I think teasing out that language between the calming spaces that students might use, which we do have some spaces in our buildings versus how the state's defining a timeout.
Right, right.
Well, this is not a an update to a policy. We don't have a policy like this. This was released from the state recently. So they wanted to give examples of what it is not and what it is and everything which needs to be included in the policy. That's why they define the room and all. So
So maybe we should, you know, individualize it a bit to fit ICSD. You know, still meet the state requirements, but say this is how how it could be used here. I'm happy to sit down with Jen or anyone else.
I have no objection in stating what it shouldn't be because we could try to individualize it. Yet there might be people who don't know what it shouldn't be. I
Yeah, I'm not objecting to that as well. I don't want timeout rooms used in our district.
Right.
And well, I'd like to see some changes to this, and I'm happy to talk with anyone more about how that might be done. And we could certainly include all the prohibitions against misuse of calming spaces or timeout rooms.
And Jill, I want to also take it potentially a step further and say that I would like to see training written into the policy. Because when we talk about restraint and physical restraint, in an ideal world, it's only certain people doing it. But if a student's eloping or something's happening where restraint needs to be used, it should be, it's very specific to the student. There are students with, that might have anatomical differences where something can harm them, right? Like a man with Down syndrome was killed being restrained at a movie theater because the police officers who were off duty didn't realize that they were killing him and he's dead. Right? So I really think it's important to add the training piece into the actual policy and explore training people in the proper techniques of whatever needs to be done. And it should be in our policy. And I'm also happy to like help and read and contribute in any way I can.
Yep. All board members have access to the Google document that is there. You are all, maybe you are not made editors, but we can make folks editors to be able to change and make suggestions. And so I'm hearing both those. There is a small paragraph about training, but it could be expanded. And I'm also hearing a conversation about being very specific about the language being used if we're not, whether we're calling it a timeout room or a calming space. But it would behoove us to be specific about what language we're referring to. That's one idea. I hear that. Caveman, I saw your hand as well.
Yeah, really quickly, I was just wondering exactly how much we weigh is there for the district to make changes to the state policy? Like, what are the requirements?
What I would say to you is any changes we would make, we would make sure that were vetted by legal counsel. So we wouldn't just do it because we're Ithaca and we're going to do something different. We would make sure that we're trying to clarify language, but also keeping within the regulations as well. And there are things that we have done with other policies that have been state regulations that we have. I think I forget the word that someone used at one point in time. We have to Ithikize or Ithicanize things, I think was the idea that people said. So we're not unfamiliar with trying to find ways in which are unique to the experience and the situation that we want to do here. And even if our forms of restorative justice count for some of the things that Jill was saying, that there are times in which and using restorative justice, we're having some conversations with folks that are outside the typical class time, right? And what does that look like? So we can give, send it around to all board members. Maybe we'll set up a a time to have a conversation for anyone who wants to attend and try to rework through some of the language. In the meantime, I would ask all board members to take a look at it. And if you have suggestions or just highlight key points that would help us as well as we go through and rewrite a policy. It would not prevent us from passing a first draft. It actually would keep the process moving forward. And excuse me, make sure that we have a second draft that's ready to go to be adopted and answers the questions that all board members have. Yes, Karen.
So my question is, how do we go from, this is going to be the first policy in 7,000 and is 7618. How do we number?
So that's a great question. Thank you for that. Our policy numbering is what is an adjective that I could use that capture interesting? Is that a non-committal word that I can use? Our policy numbering is interesting. By that, I mean about every three years, our policies that are recommended by the New York State School Board Association and other statewide agencies will change a policy number. Sometimes we keep up with those changes. Sometimes we don't. So this was a policy number that was recommended to us by NISBA and the state. And yes, it would be the first policy in the 7,000 series. So if we wanted to renumber it, we could. It just would not be consistent with other districts across the state. And that is not unusual. A lot, some of our policies are not consistent with other districts across the state as well. Did I do a good job of? Did I do a good job of not answering your question?
No, you answered my question. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments, questions, debates? All right. Hearing none, we'll call the question all in favor of approval for our first reading. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We will come back and I'll reach out with Jennifer and Emily and any other board members that want to join us for that, including Jill as well and Erin. Thank you. The next policy is policy two, two, one, zero point one. Just to reiterate Karen's question about numbering, I created this number. So if board members don't like it, that's perfectly fine. And this is a nomination and election of board officers. We currently do not have a policy about the nomination process or the election process of board officers. We discussed it briefly last year. We brought it back up again this year. This would be a second reading and adoption. And just so folks know, I chose this number because policy two, two, one, zero is the reorganization meeting. And it just seemed to fall in line directly with that number. And that's how this number was selected. So this would be outlined with a little more specificity about the nomination and election process, the key difference being that nominations would happen in essence simultaneously as would voting. And so board members would have the vote, the opportunity to vote for whomever was nominated at the same time until there was a majority winner or majority vote recipient that would then assume the role of the vice president or the president. So with that being said, I believe you have a sheet that outlines, well, there's nothing, no changes, but you have the sheet there. Let's entertain a motion and then go through any discussion and debate.
I move to approve policy two, two, one, zero point one, nomination of election of board officers for second reading and adoption.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Jill. Conversation, comments, discussion, debates?
Just remind me why the names are revealed in the minutes, but not at the moment?
That should have been fixed. And if it's not, I apologize, but it's, it's, oh, it does say the board clerk will collect the ballots, tally and announce the results.
So announce the results to me, I read as not the names of who voted, but rather just the vote tally. Well, I, I guess I don't know if results includes who voted, what way or not. But then the next item says that the details of the vote and how each board member voted shall be included in the official minutes. So my reading of this is that it's an anonymous ballot at the moment, but then not anonymous after the moment. Is that correct?
That was not the way in which I interpreted it, but I understand how it reads here.
I think we should just clarify that maybe.
Yep. So do we have recommended language? Do you want us to bring it back to the policy committee?
Yeah, I was just, no, I think the board clerk will collect the ballots, tally and announce the results with the names of the voters or something.
Or announce how each board member voted?
Yeah, yeah, that's
Right? Just to copy that same language from the next bullet point?
You're an award winner here. I like, I like that language, you know?
You got jokes. That's good. So if everyone's following along, that would be in the election process. It'd be item number five. The board clerk will collect the ballots, tally and announce how each board member voted. And then the following line would remain the same, which would be just simply that we were capturing in the minutes as well.
Sounds good.
Is that friendly? I think Adam, you moved it. I wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Friendly to you, Jill, as well.
So just to be clear, while it's anonymous, anonymous in the moment, it is not anonymous.
Right. And, and the reality is, it's, the intent is not to be even anonymous. The intent is that if there are three people who are nominated for an office, that we would vote simultaneously for any of those three candidates. That's what the process is trying to allow for. If there are two members who are nominated, then the process would allow for both, for either board member to be voted on at the same time. But yes, the reality was that the clerk would then collect these and read them. So we would know during the meeting how each board member voted. But it's, it's more of a, the idea was how can we allow for people to be voting simultaneously as opposed to one candidate and then another candidate and then another candidate, if that part makes sense.
No, and I thank you to all of y'all that worked on this because it's been such a wonky process every single year, finally. So, well done, everyone.
Yeah, I, I take absolutely no credit for the work that Emily Tracy did.
And, and just to clarify, it's not anonymous because the process in number three is that every, each board member has, has to sign their name.
But the idea being to make sure that it's not that we tally the results and then we wait for the board minutes to see who voted. That right afterwards, we get to know how each board member voted.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's necessary to have.
I understood.
Discussion, right?
Yep, I agree. Does everybody, are we okay with that change?
Yes.
Any other debate, discussion, conversation? Emily, I'd imagine you already made the change in the document. I assume so. Hearing nothing else, we'll call the question all in favor as amended. Fantastic. That passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. And then lastly is policy five, one, one, one point three. Also a policy number that I created, the Lehman Alternative Community School Enrollment for an Admission. This is a policy that is both in response to some case law that has come down for public institutions as well as a clarification of the lottery system that LACS uses for its enrollment. It has been vetted by the principal, Deb Patac, the guidance counselor office, as well as additional LACS community folks. We've, this is would be for a second reading and adoption. It can always be amended as well. I want to thank Emily. We probably spent the most time on this policy, just trying to make sure the language was clear and consistent and able to be digested from folks who have had questions about how does LACS enrollment work? And I think we have it, if it, if we don't, we can always fix it like with any policy. But I think we were able to capture the spirit of what the LACS community wanted to communicate and keeping with case law as a public institution. So we can entertain motions and then any debate or discussion.
I move to approve policy five, one, one point three, Lehman Alternative School Enrollment and Admissions for a Second Reading and Adoption.
Moved by Erin, second by Jill. Questions, conversations, debate, discussion?
Well, question, I know that LACS people had stated that applicant pool be used, not waitlist, but yet I see not waitlist is here. Why? Is that supposed to be like a synonym in this case? Is waitlist used in any other enrollment document across the district?
We don't have any other enrollment document across the district because it's the other open enrollment, which there is no waitlist or LACS. I will take complete ownership. I put that in because my thought was that people would have a better idea of what a waitlist was versus an applicant pool. And to just give some insight, happy for it to be deleted. And that's why it's in parentheses and in quotation marks. The LACS community does not use a waitlist. They talk, they use the phrase applicant pool. But if I was a parent or caregiver, I wouldn't know what applicant pool was. And so that's why I added that. And I did not get much resistance from folks at LACS. They understood that, you know, we could say AKA waitlist, but that seemed like it was as well.
I'm good with it remaining.
I, I just had one, one question that I wanted to ask about the policy. We sort of started to talk about this a little bit. I guess I heard from a few, you know, different mental health providers, some people in the community who had contacted me just asking a question. I just wonder where this might fit in. You know, under the policy or how things work. But, you know, in a situation where if, say, a student were struggling in a particular school, whether it's like, you know, at Boynton or Dewitt or Ithaca High School. And somehow it seems like, you know, having the opportunity to have that student, you know, leave one school to go to another school, like if they were bullying or if something, if something were going on. You know, I, I understand that, you know, the policy talks a lot about sort of like the lottery nature and that, you know, we're not really prioritizing people and that I understand what a gigantic can of worms it is to open it up and start going on a case by case basis for every single person and therefore why the policy exists. But like, if there's any, if there's any room, I don't know if it should be in the policy or where it would go, you know, that there could be some discretion on a case by case basis if, you know, if warranted. Like how, how that might fit in if it was, if it was maybe in the best interest of somebody to have an opportunity to transfer to another school in a, in a unusual circumstance. And I, I bring it up in the context of psychology, just because those, that's one of, one of my circles. So that came up where people asked that question. So I, so I don't know, I'm not, I'm not even necessarily saying it has to go in the policy itself. I, I just wasn't sure. So I'm bringing it up as, you know, in, in a light way, but that it was a question that came up.
This is, this has come up many times in the past. And I, I think the way it is now is probably what it's evolved to because there were so many special circumstances that it was really making the lottery system kind of corrupted. And there was a lot of talk about that and a lot of concern about that.
Yeah.
I remember one case a number of years ago when I was still working in the district when there was quite a case made for a student with an IEP and, and the line was held and it was made clear that that was not an option as an alter, even though it's called an alternate. It's not an alternative to the high school in that sense. If the high school doesn't work for you, you don't get to go to LACS. And you can see why that might be true because there'd be some, in some cases, some incentive to make the high school not work for you. So that, that's my two cents on it.
I'd agree with exactly what Jill said. You know, if we look at the percentages, last time I checked, I think Ithaca High School, and this may not be the most accurate data, but according to our NICE report card hovers around ten percent of students who have an IEP or a five oh four plan. At LACS, it's about twenty six percent. So there's a conversation about resources. And then for me, while I support the idea and want it to happen, the very, the reason why this came to us was a striking down of what some people call affirmative action plans. And that would be an affirmative action plan because it's a protected class that would be giving special privilege to. It clearly states that anyone by race, gender, ability, socioeconomic status, disability, that the, the court case that came down says that you were not allowed to take any of those into consideration when you're admitting students to public institutions. And we are a public institution. I'm happy to push back and explore what may be possible because I'm curious more as an intellectual exercise. But I'm aware if we are not able to make our school racially balanced or gendered balanced, then we have other considerations as well in terms of ability or disability.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And I wasn't even thinking of it in terms of a disability, but maybe just a, a using of discretion on us, you know, in a certain case by case basis. Which anyway, I totally understand what you're saying. That makes absolute sense. I kind of wanted to bring it up just as a point, just to have a little bit of a discussion about it. And, you know, maybe it's something that we can talk a little bit more about in the future, but doesn't mean that we can't pass the policy right now.
Let's follow up with our board, the building leadership as well and what their thoughts are. And I'm happy to explore with our council again, because I am also curious about what, what the limits are and what we can and cannot do as a public entity.
And we also have an open enrollment policy.
For K through eight.
Well, LACS is part middle.
Straddles that.
Uh, I'm going to recommend we don't talk about open enrollment for the next little bit. Additional, yes.
This is really, really small, but you did tell me we need to look at like punctuation and
Yes, absolutely.
This isn't punctuation, but under the applicant pool, waitlist section, there should even, in the last paragraph, there should either be a space before if the seat is declined or we should move it up to the next line.
Yep. And the applicant pool. Do you got it, Emily?
Yeah. I see it. You're doing it. You did it.
You're adding a space.
Yes, Emily, no, no edit like that is too small for the policy committee.
Somebody to call my boss and tell her that I noticed that.
We are well known for debates about the Oxford County. Hearing no other comments, edits, we'll call the question all in favor for a second reading and adoption. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And that brings us to our next agenda item, which is eleven point six, which is an athletic merger with Truemansburg Central School District and Lansing Central School District for varsity girls' ice hockey for the twenty four, twenty five season. We will entertain motions.
I move to approve athletic mergers with Vestal and Horseheads Central School Districts for girls' ice hockey for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year.
I am, thank you, Jill, is pointing out that there is a discrepancy between the two. I want to check right now to make sure we figure out which one that the actual recommended action is different than what is listed. And it is Vestal is what it should be.
What should?
And Horseheads. That's, those are the documents we have.
Motion.
I believe we did Truemansburg and Lansing at our last board.
It's just the title. It's
So
The motion.
Just wait a second for confirmation. So the
I'll second then.
The motion for Vestal and Horseheads. Just want to make sure we're all on the same. So who moved it? My apologies. Erin, moved by Erin, second by Adam. Discussion, debate, conversation, questions? Hearing none. Motion to approve the athletic merger with Vestal and Horseheads, all in favor. That is unanimous. That passes as well. Thank you very much. It brings us to agenda item twelve, which is other business. The board has had, well, if the board would like to enter into executive session, we will entertain motions and it would be for the sole purpose of discussing collective negotiations and keeping with Article fourteen of the Civil Service. But I am not allowed to make the motion.
I move that we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiations. Thank you.
Right here, a second?
Second.
Moved by Jill, second by Todd. Discussion, debate, conversation? All in favor? That is somewhat unanimous. That is unanimous. We expect this, for the most part, for folks in the audience and at home. We will go into executive session probably for about fifteen, twenty minutes. And then we'll come back, but that will be the conclusion of our meeting. We have no other voting items on our agenda and we'll be done for the evening once this is done. So we'll be back in about twenty minutes and we will call our meeting to close.